Yes.
Hi, how you doing?
Pretty good.
Yeah.
I have your phone.
Ready for it.
Yeah.
We can back up over there.
Yeah.
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 Five, six.
And Tracy, right?
I'm in.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
Okay.
This meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization, also known as Explore Milburn Short Hills, is hereby called to order. Sunshine compliance statement. Tracy, do you want me to read that?
Sure, if you're there live, that sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting, to the extent known, was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10:4-6, the Open Public Meetings Act, by posting notice in Town Hall and the township's website, by notification to newspapers on December 23, 2020, of the schedule for 2021, and by providing notice to the township clerk. The change of time to 6:30 PM was provided to the item, Star Ledger, and TAP on November 18, 2021, and posted on the township website on November 18, 2021. Please join me in stand to salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, can you please call the roll?
Jemana Coligan.
Here.
Tracy Castlevine here. Andrew Morgan.
Here.
Nadej Nickel.
Yeah.
Michael Parlevekio.
Here.
Richard Wasserman.
Yeah.
Steven Weiner.
Here.
Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
And I believe Jesse Moulman is here in place of Alex. Jesse?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
He says here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. The purpose of a special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn Township CID ordinance designates a new district management corporation whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of the Milburn Township through increased marketing and visibility, improve the renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement. I apologize, I have to keep pushing this page a little further for me, I have forgotten my glasses. We have Tracy approval of the minutes, minutes from the November 10 meeting, and they are attached to your packet tonight, they've been circulated previously.
Chairman, may I make an addition or a retraction in this? In the responses to public comments on page two from the November meeting, I had spoken in error, bullet point three cites that Ms. Perry Erso and Ms. Jean Pasternak had, quote, alluded to some type of criminality misuse or benefit by elected officials of the Hurricane Ida funds. Ms. Pasternak reached out to me after that meeting and asked for me to go back in the record and determine if that was accurate. It turns out she is correct, she did not make that accusation, and so I want to retract that statement on the record and have it included in the minutes going forward.
Thank you, Steve. And Tracy will make those corrections to the minutes before we approve them. Are there any other additions or deletions to the minutes of November 10, 2021? So with the inclusion of, or the exclusion of what Steve just talked about, can we have a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
Motion.
A second, please, a second. Are we doing roll call or poll in favor? We can do voice vote, roll call, okay. Roll call, please, Tracy.
Okay, and who made the motion, was that?
I think I did, I made the motion, Richard.
And I seconded it.
Okay, thank you, okay. Okay, for the roll call, Jemana Coligan?
Yes.
Tracy Castlevine, yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Nadej Nickel?
Yes.
Michael Parlevekio?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, here, I'm sorry.
Steven Weiner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. Before we go to public comment, if I could just take a step out of order, Steve, do we have a new business?
Yes, Chairman, we have Amy from Amy Jo Pilates, who's here. She recently opened her business at 109 Main Street, and as we've been doing every month or so, new businesses have been coming in to speak about their new opportunities. So Amy, if you'd like to come up and give just a brief overview of what you're doing.
Just wait till you get to the microphone, so it's on there.
Oh, I can. Hi.
Hi there, Amy.
Um, can you hear me now? I'll try to talk loud, there we go. You hear, okay. Hi, I'm Amy, founder and creator of Amy Jo Pilates, 109 Main Street, next to Splurge Bakery, across from Taylor Park, and a few doors down from Angelique Terrelon. Amy Jo Pilates, I'm gonna put my glasses on and read, is a whimsical apparel line for Pilates lovers, enthusiasts, meaning instructors, clients, students, and really anyone else. What it is, is it's boutique with a small studio, room for private sessions of Pilates sessions, and what the line is, Amy Jo Pilates, is I carry t-shirts, tank tops, hats, socks, and books, and it's really for anybody who's into Pilates, is curious about Pilates, has never done Pilates. It's not just for people who do Pilates, it's really about, for me, it's about getting healthy mentally and physically, and inhale, exhale, and other things like that. I partnered a little bit with Birch House Candles, Making a Breathe Candle, things like that, and they eat cookies. That's it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to town. Good luck with your business.
She's a great new neighbor of Splurge.
And she was remiss to tell you that we've been working on a ribbon-cutting opening ceremony this Saturday, the 18th, at 2:00 PM. We've got quite a bit going on in town this Saturday, which Marla will tell you about, but if you have a chance, 2:00 PM, come down to visit Amy Jo's studio, we'll be partnering with our friends at the Chamber on a little welcome event.
Okay, moving on to the pre-printed agenda, we're up to public comments. When invited to speak, come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or board member reads from a prepared statement, please provide a copy to tracy@explore.milburnshorthills.org. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. We also have people remotely by Zoom. Those who wish to participate in the meetings may do so in person with occupancy limits, which we don't have, or electronically by phone or computer via Zoom. Individuals calling in will be able to fully participate in the meeting during the appropriate period, which is now. You also have three minutes to speak, whether you're here or calling in via Zoom. So would you like to, your call, I give deference to the people in the room. Sure, come on up. Sure, if you could just state your name and address and speak into the microphone, please, thank you. You all have three minutes.
So, good evening. My name is Eden Kai, and I live at 14 Caramont Drive. First of all, I want to thank you, this board of trustees, for your valuable contribution to our community. As a resident here, and I really enjoying some of the Explore Milburn Short Hills events that's put together, including winter walk and live music concert. I'm proud of being this diverse and welcome community. So tonight, on behalf of Milburn Institute of Talent and Milburn Chinese Association, I want to share with you a special event, Lunar New Year Outdoor Festival. 2022 is the year of tiger. Beginning of New Year always brings new energy. So this festival will take place on Sunday, January 30, from noon to 2:00 PM. The event is designed to celebrate cultural diversity, bring the community together, and promote local business. We plan to have traditional Asian food, fun games, bouquets, lion dance, live performance, and pop-up markets. The location will be on Milburn Avenue between Main Street and Town Hall Plaza. So we are recruiting volunteers, vendors, and sponsors. Our website, www.milburnchinese.org, has more detailed information, and I also brought some flyers here today. So we hope this outdoor festival will bring joy and fun to everyone, and we welcome all the families and business companies enjoying. And lastly, I want to thank you, Mr. Steve Grillo, for this event. We going to have over 100 volunteers and expect thousands of visitors. It's a huge task, but Steve's team provided us valuable guidance. Steve is very responsive to our late-night emails and early morning calls, so this made the process a little bit less stressful. So Steve, we thank you for your help. Board, please help us spread the word, and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for letting us know and letting everybody who's watching know about that.
So I just have a question. Milburn Avenue will be closed like it was for?
Laidball.
For Laidball, am I correct?
Yeah, so we're, we're meeting.
Okay.
We can't hear the response on the phone, can whoever's speaking?
Oh, here, take this, you can take it right here.
Next week, we're meeting with the association, and you're the host of the event, and a couple of township department heads that are responsible for coordinating it, at least in terms of the closure and things of that nature. It'll be a similar closure to what we would expect for the Chamber's street fairs. So it'll be a closure from Spring Street to Main Street on Milburn Ave, and Town Hall Plaza will be closed as well.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Feld, the floor is yours.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Feld, living at Alexander Lane, Short Hills, New Jersey. On behalf of my family, to the whole community, a happy and especially a healthy holiday season. And first, Nadej, I want to thank you for your year of service, because today should be, I think, your last day on the board, I want to thank you. It was a year ago, was the first time I appeared, that me and the chair, we actually met for the first time. I believe in fate and coincidence, we look back now at a year, this community, we have a lot of litigation, we still have bare properties, we have the fair share of housing, we have flex parking, and we have a Baccone litigation. It's very important to understand the case law that's come out in the last 10 days. On Friday, the appellate division in a binding presidential opinion stated and told the public that political free speech is broader under our state constitution than the federal constitution. On Monday, another appellate division in binding opinion says, when you look at actions of various entities, you see if they offend the state and federal constitutions. The reason I say that, because there's something about political free speech. Last meeting, I submitted 11 questions, I still have not received an answer to those questions. I made open requests looking for the 501(c)(3) deductions that were allowed. I have an LM in taxation from NYU. I do not understand how 501(c)(3) designation was given to an entity that's controlled and appointed by a governmental entity, and is funded by taxpayers' dollars, and has extraordinary condemnation powers. I'm trying to investigate whether those facts were told to the IRS. As to the CID, the emergency appropriation, there are two hearings occurred, one occurred in September, and one occurred in October. September, no one from the public was allowed to speak before official action was taken. In October, only people that supported the appropriation were allowed to speak. A week ago, in the New Jersey Law Journal, there was an editorial, and one sentence dropped, really popped out. Regarding discomfort, doesn't the First Amendment conclusively value the voice of the speaker over the ears of the listener? Something called content suppression. That's what goes to the questions as to the answers to my questions. Whether they're relevant or not, I am entitled to an answer. And I think when we look at this CID, and I say this with all due respect to my gentleman on my left, there has to be a dividing line about May, call what occurred before May BS, before Steve. Things happened. He's been here, with all due respect, trying to clean up the mess that occurred, whether buying, getting buy-in from the CID.
Mr. Feld, can I just ask you to start wrapping up, please?
All right, there's two questions I have tonight, is what happens on January 1, 2022, at 12:01 AM? No budget has yet been introduced or presented to the TC for approval, how do you operate? And when you look at your agenda from last meeting and this meeting, you talk, you're going closed executive session about personnel matters. Can you be a little bit more specific? Because to best my knowledge, the only people that you have personnel is either Mr. Grillo or a Marla, or is that personnel really, you're interviewing people for the trustees? Just be a little bit more specific, and again, a healthy holiday season for everyone in this age of expanded COVID.
You, thank you. And what you don't know about coincidence is that you and I were on the same CLE today, but that's a different story.
That's because you read my comment, where they, where basically we were all bought in, that we had the right to be heard, you know, before they take official action into consideration, and you used that right back to try to cut me down. But the consensus was that the people have a right.
That was just my comment, that's all.
Yeah, but I think it's very important to understand, because it was a very important...
I was just going with your theme of coincidence. Okay. Anybody else wish to speak that's in the room before we go remote?
Good evening, sorry, Jean Pasternak, 342 Hobart Avenue. I appreciate that the November minutes were corrected, I would have really appreciated an apology, rather than just say that it was not you. I think that's very demonstrating incredible hubris, and I really do believe that it's totally unacceptable to pick on a resident who comes here, who gladly and has willingly for the last two years contributed through my tax dollars to this organization. And I do have some criticisms, and I think they are, should be listened to, and many of them are valid, so I don't appreciate being lied about in public. Mr. Feld, I think you've raised some really good examples, questions throughout this year, and I think that it's to the organization's peril to dismiss them and treat them as though they're unimportant by any member of this board or by your attorney. The emergency appropriation of the taxpayer monies to fund the grants for the Ida relief to merchants is a subject of a real issue for me. We, the residents, had no say at all in this emergency meeting and appropriation of these taxpayer monies. I think it's possibly illegal, but I hope at the end of the day, it recognizes a really poor way to treat the community that supports the efforts of Explore Milburn in such a large way. I would like to know, do you plan to do any analysis, now that we're at the end of this year, for your funders, we, the residents and taxpayers, for the 2019 through 2021 year, as to what the economic impact of the explore investment by this community, via the township's tax rolls? Much has been done, and we appreciate so many good things, but we also like to understand, we've spent close to $1 million as a community in these efforts, and we'd like to understand what, how has this impacted our township economically? And how do you plan to measure that, and when will you report back to the community in that way? I also wanted to share some observations, I've spoken to several long-term owners that are down over the last, doing business there, et cetera. What I hear is, businesses, yeah, businesses have been hard, hit hard by COVID and Ida, as well as now extreme inflationary pressures, they cannot hire people, their businesses are slow, their customer base has changed drastically, and they're not spending money like the customers in the past, they're not recovering from the hits that they've had, their expenses are going way up to the point where they have to consider whether to remain in town in business. Landlords are not giving concessions on rent in these difficult times, they're getting hit with additional tax at this time, which is happening in January for the explore assessment, and some businesses are now considering whether to stay or leave. That's kind of like the straw that broke the camel's back. The CID was created possibly improperly, though no one will take responsibility for investigating the facts surrounding this, and it's taken a lawsuit to try and get to the bottom of it.
Ms. Pasternak, can I just ask you to stop?
Sure, absolutely.
Stop winding up, thank you.
I think that what we'd like to know from Mr. Ryan, and perhaps in speaking with his previous colleague, Kit Falcon, has there been, or is there, does there plan to be a written opinion as to the validity of the legality of the CID? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room want to speak?
Thank you, pal, 350HC Milburn Avenue. I just want to commend you guys for the holiday events, the Grinch was a big hit, everyone loved it, taking pictures around town, loved the strolling music, it was nice that it was all over the town, so everyone could enjoy it, and all the businesses could enjoy it, definitely hit it out of the park, looking forward to Santa this weekend. Love the work that Hip Suburbia did for the videos, looking forward to the other districts that she's gonna do, I think it was a great social media push, but I would also like maybe to think for next year, for marketing, I think maybe like Christmas guides, or, not Christmas guides, holiday guides, you know, wish lists, and grab information from all the other stores and make wish lists, so people can see what everyone has to offer, give certificates to restaurants, give certificates to the nail salons, hair salons, what is the hot gift in the stores, I think something like that would also be very good for holiday ideas, even for Valentine's Day and Mother's Day, I mean, we're thinking about the next holidays, which would be good. And then also, I'd like to say, thank you, Nadej, for all the work you've done on Explore. Today is your last meeting, and I think you're one of the, you're a killer business owner, and you're a great resident, and everything comes from your heart, and you started the Milburn Merchants before we had the CID, and you went onto the board, and I just want to commend you for all your hard work, because you give from your heart, and you are not a selfish person, and you're for all the merchants, so I want to thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak before we go to Zoom calls? Stone, good evening.
Mrs. Stone. I'm 40 years gonna be married this year, I'm proud of it. So I also want to commend you, Nadej, you did a phenomenal job starting Milburn Merchants, which I participated in when you first got that group together and your beautiful store. You definitely lead from the heart, passion has always been something that I've always contributed to this community in terms of my community service as well, and it's not easy to be volunteering your time and efforts when, unfortunately, the transition was a tough one going to the CID, when there was opposition that was ignored for many on the town council. I just want to say that we're at December 17 at this point, I'm working seven days a week at this point, so I don't even know what day it is anymore, but... What day is it? What, 16th? I'm already on tomorrow's, yeah, exactly, I'm already on tomorrow's schedule, but I sent a very strong email, because it popped up this afternoon, Steve had sent out an email about the parking permits, which I didn't think was his job to be doing, because I didn't think that was quote-unquote "improving the business district," and he could be spending his time on better suited items, so whoever delegated that task to him should be really reevaluate what his job duties are, because they're certainly not letting people know about the business permit, because actually you're on the township committee, and that's something, if you delegated that to him, was really out of order, and it really fired off, an email that I'm sure you received this afternoon as well, and you saw. So I'm not going to reiterate everything that was in that email, but I made myself very clear about what's going on and what needs to be done. Moving forward, I understand you have a budget, you're presenting to the TC when? Tuesday, is it coming out? I don't know. We'll get to that, but from what I understand, you were supposed to be in charge of the fiscal responsibility of this organization, and December 16, no budget presented, when are you supposed to review? Who's gonna be in charge of that? I mean, it's embarrassing that we're at late to the game, and no budget, nothing is being presented, not only to the business community, but also to the residents, which I am one as well. Unacceptable, and your efforts, I mean, we saw the Grinch walking around, nobody stops in, but everything's, you know, Milburn Avenue, that's okay. I'm proud to say I was one of the first merchants on Essex Street, glad to see that a lot of people followed, which was great. I just think that you really need to pay attention to the financial responsibility of this organization, and you specifically have to be held accountable for that, because you made a commitment a year ago, frankly, a year and a half ago, Jackie's no longer on the committee, on the board of TC anymore.
Can I just ask you to start wrapping up?
I understand, I got, I can read very well. She's not responsible for that, but you are, since you have one more year to serve.
Did everybody in the room? Did everyone who's in the room have a chance to speak, who wants to speak? Okay, if we have anyone on Zoom who wishes to speak? Jesse, are you clicking through? Okay, could you just put your name on the record, please?
Sure, of course, Perry Erso, 514 Milburn Avenue, Short Hills.
You have three minutes.
Joyous, healthy holiday seasons from our family here. I understand that statements have been removed from the minutes, there should be no room for this type of behavior. Sorry, I'm at work. It states clearly in the minutes that Mr. Grillo specifically addressed... And that's not what I stated, and refer to the statement included in your minutes. Clearly states, the application should be carefully reviewed and looked at. It was Mr. Grillo who mentioned criminal activity. What brought him to this conclusion? What is it he knows that we don't? As per the chair's request, stated in the minutes, both the executive director and attorney spent a fair amount of the meeting regarding the bare property litigation. The minutes do not reflect the argument, nor has the township attorney, who was clearly representing this entity, to hiring Mr. Cooper, failed to name this entity as the necessary party. To my knowledge, whether Mr. Grillo was not an attorney, and should not be given any legal opinions or update. Isn't that correct, Mr. Parlevekio? First, based on the minutes and the videos, my family is reserving all defamation claims against all third parties. Second, I would address Mrs. Lieberberg, statements at the reorganization meeting, January 7, 2020. Quote, "We need to create a plan to make our downtown more attractive, vibrant, and viable. Driven by vast technology, technological, technological, sorry, change, the world is changing rapidly and dramatically. If our town doesn't move forward..." If our town doesn't move forward and embrace change, quite simply, we'll be left behind." So you did this. Not only reintroduced the DMDA, but expanded into five districts without public buy-in and feasibility study. You also stated the following. Tara, our merchant deputy mayor. Please continue to engage our stakeholders. I am very concerned about emails received by way of Oprah responses, which are heavily redacted of all businesses that you met or contacted prior to the formation of the SID. And once again, quote, to our newest TC member at the time, Richard Wasserman. I hope you totally immerse yourself into the township's duty and devote all your passions to those issues that are important to you. Do you feel, Mrs. Wasserman, Mrs. Lieberberg, that Mr. Wasserman is totally engaged and fairly represented the entire business community? As you both pledged, your reason for being on this board, and you both said, "Trust us." And again, a quote, "Parking must be more available and accessible." So what's being done to keep your merchants off the streets? And then you have Mr. Wasserman here amending zoning ordinance over the objections of citizens and disenfranchised property owners. Both you and Mr. Wasserman repeatedly stated, one of the reasons that you're on the board is for oversight. So I would request that you and Mr. Wasserman require Mr. Grillo to provide a detailed accounting of all activities which are provided to each
Sir, so can I ask you to start wrapping up, please?
Yes, sir. Finally, don't interrupt, I'm almost done. I am reading a prepared statement. A detailed accounting of all activities which were provided to each and every district within the SID. Because it appears that the SID's biggest beneficiaries had been awarded to the paid professionals. If the SID cannot afford benefit to all, then it shouldn't be at all. Just ask the Grinch. And finally, and more importantly, I ask Mr.
Sir, so you've gone about four minutes. Can I ask you to please wrap up in the next 10 seconds?
Could you be any more ruder? How much, by way of Oprah, I am your receipt of last year's anticipated assessment based on 2018 budget. On November 18th, 2021, I once again, I emailed the township tax assessor, the tax collector, and the CFO.
So your time is up.
Can we move on?
20 assessment, oh, what an asshole.
Thank you for that. That'll be in the minutes, too.
Classy.
Anyone else wish to put comments on the record? Okay, I guess that's it. No responses to public comments, because as we learned in our class today, it's public comment, not public question and answer. Right? Township Committee report, Mr. Wasserman.
Yeah, thank you so much. First of all, a lot of people stole my thunder, because I really wanted to publicly. Thank you, Nancy. Anyway, as I was saying, a lot of people stole my thunder tonight, because I wanted to really thank Nadej for all of your hard work. You were part of the driving force behind this organization. And again, before Jackie and I joined forces to create the SID, you were there really working every day trying to help the merchants. And I just want to recognize you on behalf of a very grateful township. And I just want to thank you for the record. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
So with that being said, so right now, in terms of my report, the township is organizing for next year. We are reviewing interest forms. And I just want to, there's still time. If anybody out there would like to volunteer to Milburn Township, there's still time. You just have to email your volunteer interest form. And so we've really been at work at that. I also want to thank Steve and Marla for all their hard work. I really like seeing the Grinch running around town. I think one of the other towns got one over on us, because they showed the Grinch being captured by the police or something. And I was thinking that, you know, maybe our police could capture the Grinch next year. So with that being said, so really, you know, we're wrapping things up for the year. We're looking forward to a very exciting next year. We're looking for really great things from this organization and for Steve's leadership. And I really am looking forward to supporting the businesses even more. I think that this organization has been great in terms of social media, but it's really turned into an economic engine for the township. It's really helped. I've just been looking back in the year. You know, we've had such, we've had such service, as they say, between the, you know, between COVID and the flood, the terrible flood. And I'm just really appreciative that we were on the ground helping our fellow merchants and distributing funds, you know, that I think were sorely needed. So that's kind of my comment for the evening, but I do want to thank everybody. I also want to thank everybody that comes to the meetings for their input. And a lot of times, I'm writing notes, but I just want to assure everybody that I'm listening. And I'm gonna do everything I can to make this organization even better.
Thanks, Richard. Business administrator report, Mr. Mollman.
So township is offering free shopper parking from now through January 2nd. Time limits do apply, but enjoy free parking. And the only report I have.
You're gonna give a report. There's free involved in it. Can't be that bad. Treasurer's report, Mr. Warner.
Okay, sorry about that. Hi, very brief report. Our monthly operating budget was posted online. Just to draw a couple of highlights. As of December 6th, our account balance at the bank was $39,153. And really, we've closed out most expenses for the year. We only have a few weeks left. Just bring your attention down to the difference. And it shows, meaning what we budgeted for and what we've actually spent. And we're at about $14,000. However, in the next few weeks, we think a few more bills will get paid. So we're still on target for about a $10,000 carryover, carry forward into next year. That was really the highlights. Everything else is looking good for year end.
Thanks, Stephen. Mr. Cooper, attorney's report.
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, unless there are questions on any specific matters from the board, the only real update I guess I would provide is that I did review the docket for the bear properties litigation this afternoon. There has been no substantive change. Plagets continue to request mediation. That has not been granted by the courts. The last request is, I think, about a month old. So I don't expect that to change, based on my experience reading dockets, but who knows? And that's my report for this evening. Unless there are questions, I'd be happy to field it.
Anybody have any questions, or Friday? All right. If not, we'll move on to Mr. Grillo and his report.
Thank you, Chairman. We have a list here in your agendas, which I'll read for the public, of some recently opened businesses and soon-to-open businesses. You met Amy Jo Pilates today at 109 Main Street. That's the neighbor to a new, another new business that came in about two months ago, Angelique Terolong, the Feather Fashion Business. So that building is fully occupied. There's a new salon, a door salon by Chlorey at 32 Essex Street. Excited to see that building occupied. It's a very, very large space on a corner lot. And that salon's doing quite well. That's 3234. It's a pretty big space. Then we also have a couple of businesses coming in as we speak. Mochi Moly Donuts will be downtown, across, really near Lackawanna Place, in that part of the downtown. KC Foot Spa is opening at 518 Milburn Avenue, on Upper Milburn Avenue. Across the street is Tonino Cigars at 515. That's next to another new business, Taste Buddy, who also presented here. Tiger Schulman's Martial Arts is coming to 531 Milburn Avenue. So another Upper Milburn Avenue business. And then on the border between downtown and Wyoming, Atlantic Health is going into the old Jose Iber Salon space. It's at 284 Milburn Avenue. So very excited to see so many businesses planning to open in the beginning of 2022, especially on Upper Milburn Avenue, where we do have the highest vacancy rate in the district. So I think this will certainly help to bring down those numbers when we make that report anticipated for February. There's some administrative items that I need to go through. So first off, just for everyone's calendar, our board training will be on January 13th at 5:30 PM. So that's the normal date of our scheduled meeting. We're moving it up an hour. We'll do very basic business. We'll meet in this room, go through the usual steps, public comment, review the budget. And then unless there's an emergent issue, no other business will be conducted. We'll go then into closed session for the training, which is expected to last about three hours. So just mark your calendars down for that. We did close out the Hurricane Ida Business Recovery Fund, which I'm very excited to say. So you have a report in your handouts. It's item number three. There's a three in a circle on the upper right-hand corner. You'll see all 75 grants that were issued. That totals $421,750. Two payments were made typically to each business, because we had money coming in at different times. So very few businesses received just one payment. That's why you see three total columns there. And just as a recap of what was received, the total amount of funds raised was $440,460. The township provided $220,000, and private sources provided $220,460. So almost identical. The total distributed, as I mentioned, was $421,750. $6,500 was reserved for the audit, which was part of the memorandum of understanding that we agreed to with the town. So that was always intended to be set aside. And then we had $12,210 worth of non-town allocated expenses. So those were donations made to the Milburn Mudball. The Mudball event happened. We raised over $23,000 for the SID at that event. And so some of the expenses went to cover those costs. And then the Mudball, being a separate entity from the SID, did distribute funds to, I believe, seven or eight other businesses outside the SID district. I believe they gave checks of $1,825 to seven or eight businesses. So those expenses were well-spent. At this point, we just have $6,500 in uncashed checks, which out of $421,000 is pretty good. And so I hope that those checks will clear in the next few days, and we'll close out the entire account for this year, minus the money being held for the audit. So overall, we are about 99% done with the Ida program. Are there any questions on Ida? Okay.
Steve, can I just say something? I just want to throw out a thank you to Wendy Bisson for her leadership with the Mudball. I've gotten calls from merchants outside of the SID who were so appreciative of her efforts and really had some very nice conversations with those merchants. And I just want to thank you. If you're out there, Wendy, thank you so much for everything you've done for the township.
Wendy's been wonderful. She's a terrific partner to help the town. She's been just great to work with. Some administrative items that all sort of flow together. So submissions to the township committee regarding the 2021 and 2022 financials. The bylaws and the ordinance require that the executive director submit a recap of the 2021, or the previous year, happens to be 2021, financials with an explanation of why certain line items were either below or over the original budgeted amount. You all saw that at our November meeting. So I simply formalized that and sent it to the clerk. That will be submitted to the township committee as required by ordinance. Secondarily, the 2022 financials, you approved a budget at the last meeting, which I'll speak about in a moment. The ordinance requires an explanation of that budget. So I simply added narrative to each of those line items. And why certain... Is everybody okay? So I simply added narrative as to why those line items were the way they were. And that is also provided to the township committee via the clerk. So we're in full compliance with the ordinance. Speaking of the 2022 budget. So as I was working with Alex McDonald, the town business administrator, there's a timing issue with the township committee in how they can review the budget that we approved. So in terms of what we needed to do, our obligation for the 2022 budget, we introduced it in October at our annual meeting workshop. It was then approved formally at our November meeting. I then submitted it to the clerk. The township committee does not have enough meetings in the remainder of 2021 to introduce it and then meet the mandatory 28-day waiting period between introduction and final passage. So that's because they don't have a second meeting in November. If they had a second meeting in November, we would have been okay. So I tell you that story to say what will happen, and we'll be in perfect shape for the assessment that we need. We've worked this out with the tax assessor. But these are the key dates. So we've submitted everything to the town. The town is in possession of our approved budget. The SID budget will then be introduced at the January 18th meeting of the township committee. After that, the assessment will be sent to the property owners by the tax assessor's office. That will occur no later than January 28th. The public hearing and consideration of the adoption of that budget will be on February 15th. So that will give us the requisite 28 days between the 18th of January and the 15th of February. At the meeting on February 15th, the public hearing and final approval of the budget will be in front of the township committee. We then expect that immediately thereafter, there will be money coming in from the tax assessment, and we're expecting that the tax assessment due date will be probably April 15th. So we will have enough money in the account from what we carry over. As Stephen mentioned, about $10,000. The township also is obligated to pay $53,000 towards the organization. That money will come in early in January. So we should have over $60,000 in the bank, pretty much at the beginning of the year. And then as the assessment comes in, we'll then get closer to our full $204,000 budget. So really, what we lost sort of in the timing is about a month, but the dates haven't changed to elongate the process. So it's just a truncated process. We did consider, you know, the issue with the November annual meeting. So what you'll see in the draft calendar that I've put forth later in this presentation, we're gonna move the November annual meeting to October, and that will take care of all of the scheduling issues that the township committee has. So I know folks in the public comment had asked, you know, what happens to the budget? Why has it not been introduced? The budget was introduced and adopted and approved by this body. But there are not enough meetings in the rest of the year to fulfill the public review process, which obviously, in terms of transparency, fairness, and openness, we want to make sure that we're in compliance. So we'll be fine financially, but we're doing the right thing legally as well. And then the final item, and this is really more for myself and Tracy. The township had been this year providing all of the notifications to the item and other publications of our schedules. We were the only group that they do that for in the town. I think it was part of the startup courtesy that they had offered. So the clerk notified me that the SID will now be responsible for that. So just wanted to make sure that was out with you guys. It's not really a major issue. Tracy and I will handle it. We'll meet with the clerk and make sure we have all the appropriate documents. But going forward, we will be responsible for posting our own meeting announcements. And that is it for me, unless there's any other questions. Marla's gonna talk about our marketing effort.
I don't have... Does anybody have any questions? I don't think I do. I understand. So we're in, budget at township committee level is introduced January 18th, scheduled for second reading, public hearing, adoption, presumably February 15th.
That is correct.
No other questions? We will move on to Marla and Small Business Season. I see her up there.
Yes, thank you. You guys hearing me okay?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, awesome. Well, as Michael so well put it, we love calling it Small Business Season, because that is what extends it past just the holiday season. Gets us starting well before Thanksgiving, and we've been pushing really hard since then just on the topic of the holiday season, instead of waiting until December. We installed four branded banners. I'm sure some of you've seen the big one that goes across Main Street, but we also have one on Essex. And then we have two in the other districts. And we're working with NJ Hipsterbia on those videos. The downtown ones have already launched, and we will be launching videos from the other districts. We found some empty planters in downtown, and Steve found a vendor, local landscape designer, and now they're filled with holiday plantings. And this is just a way where, when we see something, we And this is just a way where when we see something, we do something. So, you know, commends to Steve on that because he spotted that. We, in the events category, we launched the Snowflake Hunt, which has twenty-one participating businesses. And what that is, is our community can go to any participating business, pick up a card, find the snowflake, mark it down, chance to win fifty-dollar and hundred-dollar gift cards, which Explore will buy from our participating stores. So a nice interactive community event that gets people walking around town and perhaps visiting stores that they normally don't. And since they have to fish around the stores a little bit for those snowflakes, they're also doing a little shopping. We also launched winter windows, which was very popular last year. We have thirteen windows that were done thanks to Art Advisory Council, One River School, and a whole team of high school artists. So thank you to all of those volunteers who helped us decorate the windows. And we will be putting up some social on that to let people know exactly where they are. Our social media calendar has been full of not only original content, like those videos we were creating, videos we go out and do on our own and original posts, but we also try to keep an eye on what all of our merchants are posting and share that on our stories, again, for gift ideas and some of the things that Vicki mentioned we're trying to do now. And then, of course, we could always do more. And next year will be even a bigger, stronger year in that category. More on events. We had a DJ on Small Business Saturday in town doing holiday music. We followed up with some live music. We had the brass quartet that you've already seen. And we have a music school coming this weekend. They're having a choral group on Saturday, a ukulele group on Sunday. Between the hours of twelve and two, they will be wandering around downtown. The Grinch made his stops wandering around downtown and then doing a photo op at Taste Buddy, which was very well attended. And Richard, if we want, we could arrest Santa this weekend. He's coming Saturday, so we could maybe pull that off. But Santa will be here. He's making two stops. He will be at Bagel Pantry, and then he will be at the Book House. We're also going to maybe make a pit stop with our music at the open house and open house and ribbon cutting that Annie Jo is having. So very busy weekend. And hope to see you guys around town and enjoying the events. I also want to thank Nadej. She's been a great partner in crime since I've been on board. So I've been thrilled to work with her. Thank you, Nadej. And if anyone has any questions on anything we're doing, I'll leave it open for that.
Thank you, Marla. That was helpful. I would just make one recommendation against arresting Santa Claus for fear of nightmares and psychological problems.
Okay, you know, that's why we discuss things here, right?
Anybody have any questions for Marla? All right, if not, Mr. Grillo, you're talking about potential action items that we have listed.
Yes, Chairman, I'm actually going to defer to Mr. Cooper to discuss the bylaws. So...
The Chair will allow, I'll take the podium, so those online...
That'd be great, thank you.
Great, thank you. So in the Board's packet this evening are proposed amendments to the bylaws for the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Incorporated, the C Corporation, that is Explore Milburn Short Hills. I'm going to be brief. As these proposed revisions were gone over individually at the November meeting, I will call the Board's attention to Section 4.07, Meetings of the Board, particularly subsection A. That is the only change since these were discussed in November. And that is just changing the annual meeting dates to October from November to reflect the budgeting process that the Executive Director just outlined for the Board a few moments ago. So I'm happy to go in greater detail through any of them, but I do not want to belabor it or take up your time any more than I needed to. So unless there are questions, I'll rest my presentation at that point.
Ryan, just to confirm one thing. We did, and to reiterate what you said, we did go through these fairly thoroughly at the last meeting with that one change that you mentioned. As far as process, if this is adopted, if these changes are adopted tonight, it then goes to the Township Committee for further approval, is that correct?
So the exact process, the motion will be made and seconded tonight and adopted, that's correct. It will be referred to the Township Committee because these have been provided to the Board ten days in advance of today's meeting? Yes? Okay. So in that event, what I would recommend is we'll make a motion and second. That motion will then be voted on at the next meeting. If that motion carries at the next meeting, the bylaws will refer to the Township Committee for action. Township Committee will either adopt them, not adopt them, or send them back with proposed revisions. If the Township Committee does send them back with revisions, those revisions are accepted on motion by this body. Those bylaws then become effective and do not need to go back to the Township Committee. So for today, a motion and a second. The vote will be at the next meeting.
So it's basically a preliminary approval by motion. We're not approving them, but we're moving the changes.
Yeah, well, the motion will be made. This body will not vote on that motion. Under the bylaws, the amendment process requires that you receive them ten days in advance to actually vote on the motion. So this way, although there's only one change, there's been one change, we'll, you know, be absolutely above board on every single tweak in I dotted. So that'll give the Board another month to review the content and substance of all these amendments. And that vote will, the vote on the motion will occur at the next board meeting.
Okay, so we're basically moving these to, to move them to the next meeting?
That's correct.
Or less.
Well, it would be a motion. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I would ask for a motion.
You could frame that motion.
If the Board is inclined to, I would ask for a motion to adopt the bylaws as amended. And if the Board is inclined to ask for a second of that motion and then to table the motion to the January, or sorry, to carry the motion to the January meeting.
Okay. First, does anybody have any questions on the, on these bylaw amendments? If no questions on these, we'll have a motion. This will be a motion to adopt the amendments to these bylaws. And just to be clear, the vote will be carried, or the motion will be carried to the next meeting. So can I have a motion, please?
Sure, some move.
And a second?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're not going to have a roll call, correct?
That's correct.
And we will carry this to the meeting of January, what's the date? Sorry.
Thirteenth.
January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, in this room.
Thank you.
I just want to confirm, the motion was by Stephen. And Andrew, you did the second? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. So speaking of January thirteenth, in front of you, under item five, is the proposed meeting dates for 2022. And as you'll see, there are ten meetings as opposed to the twelve we had this year. In discussion with the Executive Committee, we thought that it would be prudent to remove the July and August meeting dates as most bodies do take time off for the summer. But we will be meeting on a regular basis of once a month. And with the Chair's permission, I'd like to just go through these with any of the changes and other items. So... Did you find it, Jackie?
No.
Pretty much all the way at the back of the little penultimate page or so.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the way at the back of your packets, guys. Yeah. So January thirteenth, as we discussed before, will be a board meeting as well as the appointment of officers and committee assignments, which we need to handle, the board training and the adoption of the bylaws and referring that over to the Township Committee. We will then have a regularly scheduled meeting at six-thirty, but it will be moved to Wednesday, February ninth, due to a scheduling conflict. And then Thursday, March tenth, six-thirty. Wednesday, the thirteenth, six-thirty. So there's two Wednesday meetings next year as opposed to our normal Thursday. And then for the remainder of the year, with the exception of our annual meeting, which will start at 5:30, all meetings will be on Thursdays at 6:30 PM in this room. Any questions or comments?
Anybody have any questions about the 2022 proposed meeting dates? I assume we can take a motion to...
We will need a motion to adopt, and I'll work with Tracy to post these.
Motion. A motion to adopt the 2022. Richard moved it. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who seconded that.
That was Jumana.
Jumana, okay, we have a motion and a second. Tracy, can you please call the roll?
Yep, Jumana Coligan?
Yes.
Tracy Cat-Slavine, yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Nadej Nickel?
Yes.
Michael Parlavetio?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Stephen Weiner?
Yes. Will be, we be continuing to offer a Zoom alternative, given the COVID protocols for 2022? Is that...
I, listen, I don't see why not at this point. This hybrid seems to be...
Effective.
Of all the things that I've seen, the hybrid seems to be the best way to go rather than space, you know, not have enough room for people or just go fully remote. Now, unless something goes drastically worse than it is, I would like to keep it like this. Allows people to...
Yes, I agree.
Zoom in, you know.
It's the...
Public comment, I think it's a fair way to do it.
And it's the best of both worlds.
Yep, it's, it's one of those silver linings of this crazy last two years or last year and a half. We have executive session on personnel matters. And dare I say it on the record, Mr. Feld, I don't disagree with you that maybe a little color could be given to, you know, without divulging the personnel matter itself.
I would just, I would just make the differentiation that personnel matters are people that are compensated for their time.
Yes, I agree.
Whereas personnel would reflect just that employee, individuals that are compensated for their time. Board of Trustees are not compensated. Therefore, I would not refer to them as personnel.
Right, so we're not talking about filling our, filling the desert spot. This is one of our, yeah, it's one of our vendors or one of our... We don't have employees, so that's the difference. It's not like a public body where we have public employees. So it's, it's going to be for one of our consultants. We have a very good New Year. Thank you very much.
It was good going there. That was exciting seminar today. Young Turks to global.
Every year, the group's there.
No, today was exceptional.
Yep. He's good.
So we need a motion to move into...
Just to be clear, we're not thinking, we're not coming out and taking any action. This is just for discussion purposes only.
That is correct. We do need to read the resolution to the record.
Yep. I got it here. Okay. It's a resolution authorizing executive session for the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Incorporated. It's Resolution 21-013. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides for the exclusion of the public during the discussion of certain matters. And whereas prior to the exclusion of the public from a meeting, it is required that the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Incorporated Special Improvement District Board of Trustees adopt a resolution stating the general nature of the subject to be discussed and stating as precisely as possible the time when the minutes of the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public. And whereas this body is about to consider a matter which falls within the purview of NJSA 10:4-12 and can properly exclude the public from such discussions, therefore be resolved that the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization Incorporated Special Improvement District Board of Trustees shall enter into a closed session to consider the following matter, personnel matters. And it is further resolved, the minutes of said discussion shall be made public as soon as the matter under discussion is no longer of confidential nature. And can we have a motion? Motion. And a second, that's Richard moved it, second?
Second.
Second by Stephen. Roll call, please.
Jumana Coligan?
Yes.
Tracy Cat-Slavine, yes. Andrew Morgan?
Yes.
Nadej Nickel? Michael Parlavetio?
Yes.
Richard Wasserman?
Yes.
Stephen Weiner?
Yes.
Just for the record, Tracy, Andrew, and Jumana, who are all remote, I provided you, or Jesse provided you with the link to the closed session. So just check your email, and then you'll be able to join us in the conference room.
Okay, see you soon.
I just got to the boys' room.
I was going to say report for 40.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
There we go.
What are we talking?
Interviews for the.
Oh, for the, for the candidates. For the board of trustees.
Do you want to do, is it better just doing, doing email over the weekend?
I think we just set up a Zoom meeting. The whole thing should be.
Yeah, Zoom should. If you're talking about mornings.
Whatever you got. Sorry, what? Next week?
Yeah, you, do I, would you feel badly if I didn't join that?
I would not.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, how about the preview?
Yep.
If it's morning, the only morning I can't do is Wednesday.
About the 21st?
That's funny, that's where I had the hole in my calendar already.
I can do 9:30, I can't do any, I can, I can't do 8:30.
We do 9:30, is that 30? And we can do back to backs?
Yeah, that's good.
Are we doing Zoom or in person?
Zoom.
Fine.
Nice, right?
Yeah. Why can't we say 9:40, just in case? No, I should be okay.
Yeah.
9:30?
Just keep, just keep in the loop, see?
So 9:30 to 10, or what are we, 9:30?
Yeah, 9, just block out 9:30, 10:30.
So we, we're good with the motion too?
I usually let them come back.
Wait, Tuesday the 21st at 9:30?
And then if nobody has any comments, we can.
You know what? Can we say 9:45? Is that too late for you?
Second.
Third. Everybody?
Good night, everybody. Happy holidays. Happy New Year.
Good night, all.